Good morning. We'll call this meeting the Allegheny County Board of Legislators to Order for October 15, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Passat. Mrs. Burdick.
Here.
Mr. Curran. Mr. Demick.
Here.
Mr. Fanton.
Here.
Mrs. Hanchett.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Havy.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Ricky. Mrs. Rickett Swales. Mrs. Root.
Here.
Mr. Rumfelt. Mr. Stocken.
Here.
Ten present, five absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeking approval of the agenda as presented is there a motion? Thank you, legislator Root, seconded by legislator Fanton. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, and the agenda is approved. Advisory Board appointments. Upon request to the board, the county administrator has prepared a draft, not policy, but maybe draft guidance on advisory board appointments. That would include, in this case, I think, the IDA, which has appointments forthcoming. Can you walk us through what you've given us today, please?
Sure. So, just to let you know, I stole a policy. This is actually Cortland County's policy that I took and drafted it for the county. I deleted some things and added it, but they had a really nice policy to start with. So, the policy would apply to all of your advisory boards. Advisory boards are defined in here, and I made a, the second to last page is actually a list. Off the top of my head are the ones I know that you appoint to. I might have cheated and looked at Brenda's list, too, but we might find a few more to add to this as we go through the draft. But this draft would tell you that, you know, you're going to have an application from each person that's interested in applying for advisory board. The application's the very last page. It's very simple, asking for their name and their town of residence, some basic information on them that would allow us to know that they're actually qualified to be on advisory board. By qualified, I mean, public officer's law tells us certain things about qualifications. You have to be a U.S. citizen. You have to reside in the place that you're representing. You have to be over 18 years old, unless it's a youth board. And you can't be convicted of certain crimes that are very specific to being disqualified from holding public office, like defrauding the government is the one that comes to my mind. There's not very many of them. Most people aren't convicted of those things. We are also asking some basic questions. If they're able to attend meetings on a regular and consistent basis, I would hope that would be a yes. We'd ask them to state their occupation and any community affiliations. That would give us a sense if they are already volunteering other places and successful in attending meetings. Or sometimes you do appoint based on someone's occupation. Certain boards might require you to have so many seats held by a farmer, like I think Soil and Water does. And then we would, we did put a couple lines for them to state their interest in the position, and I put a footnote saying if they wanted to write a letter or give us additional pages, that's up to them. So, that is the policy. A couple of things to note that I liked. Cortland County had talked about vacancies, and as we know, there's certain ways that you can vacate an office. You can die. You can resign. You can move out of the district that you represent. Or, in the case of Cortland County, they said, anybody missing three or more consecutive meetings and their body hasn't excused them, that would be an automatic vacating the office, and you guys could reappoint somebody else. Doesn't mean you have to, but if somebody's not attending the boards which you appoint them to, maybe they're really not interested in serving them, especially if they're unexcused absences.
Where is that language?
That would be in Section 2 Policy, Item B. Talks about vacancies. And then I also looked at what a couple other counties did outlining what an advisory board is supposed to report back to this board on. Not all advisory boards, some advisory boards are just separate entities that you fill bodies on, but many of them are created by this board and are supposed to report back to this board certain things. And they should be telling us when their meetings are. They should be providing us a copy of their minutes, and they should be following public officer's law. You know, they can't go into executive session for any other reason than you guys can go. The rules, same rules that apply here apply to them for minutes, notices, executive session. So I just wanted to remind our advisory boards of that, and they really shouldn't be adopting their own bylaws, many of these boards. They should be drafting them, giving them to our county attorney, and then this board should be adopting them. So that goes for, like, our planning board, our Board of Ethics, those sorts of things.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So, you know, most of these are longstanding boards or committees.
Correct.
If they wish to do a bylaw amendment, would they probably have to follow that same procedure? In other words?
They really should, yes, because they're not, most of these boards aren't independent bodies, so they can't go out and create bylaws that wouldn't meet the state statutes or the federal statutes or even your own county local laws. So that's why our county attorney should look at them and you as a board should say, okay, that's a great amendment, and we update it. Some of them, the state actually requires you to do, and I'm trying to think, it might be, like, Southern Tier West, I think you might have to adopt their bylaws, even though that's a separate entity. Some that you don't. Like the IDA, you do not have to adopt their bylaws. They are a separate entity for that purpose, so. And they have to meet all these same requirements, but they do that in their own box, not our box.
So we have some boards who retain their own counsel, correct?
Correct.
And we have, probably a majority of them, would avail themselves of the county attorney for any legal questions?
Well, they would have to, because most of them are county boards. So the ones on here that you appoint to, and I did look through your appointments, like Accord, we don't have anything to do with Accord, other than you are supposed to appoint the person from our organization that fills that space there. So all we want from them is, we know that the person we're appointing has, you know, is qualified to go there, and that's all we really need from them. Land Bank is quasi-separate. You know, we created them. They're a little bit different. But kind of going through these things, they could have their own attorney. Some of these can't. Soil and Water is its own board, but we also created them, and the law says the county attorney is their attorney. So each board's a little bit different. You kind of got to go through and treat them individually.
Okay.
So if a board already has bylaws, should they then submit them for approval?
Well, I think each, treat each board differently. We certainly want a copy of every board's bylaws, even if you don't have to adopt them, because we have things that come up from time to time that we're asking boards, is this your current copy or bylaws? We're trying to figure out, you know, are we appointing the right person? So even if we don't have to approve them, they should still be sending their bylaws to Brenda to keep in the file with that advisory board, with the appointments.
But if they already have bylaws, how do you know if they're acceptable?
I think that's where our county attorney would come in, and she would be, like, I know she worked with the EMS advisory board to draft their bylaws, and really, we probably should have taken the next step for that group and had them here to be approved, because you created that advisory board. Each one is just different.
Does, sorry, does this address the requirements to post their bylaws on their website, post their agendas, post their minutes?
So I didn't, I tried not to get too specific on things, and just looking at what a couple other counties did. I just said, you know, open meetings, unless statutorily exempted or subject to another specific law or reg, they have to follow public officer's law, the same as you do, which has things in it such as posting public notice, having meetings in spaces that the public can get to, you know, taking and publishing your minutes, having a quorum, those things. But I just kind of bolded a few highlights, but I didn't go through and do the whole law. It does address that if this is an advisory board created by us, we want a copy of their minutes within two weeks of their meeting, which is what they should be doing, and then we can put those on our website. And I did say also the same thing. If we created this advisory board, they're welcome to have a page on our website. They just need to get in contact with my office, and we can help set that up. We don't do that for the ones you don't create, but the ones you do create, we can help them set up their own webpage.
Gotcha. Steve's on mic.
I'm wondering, the Southern Tier Railroad Authority is multi-county, and I'm wondering how to handle that.
So they're, they're pretty much separate on their own, Steve. All we're doing is appointing our members to them, but we do want a copy of their current bylaws, so we know that we're appointing the correct amount of people in those things, but we don't really have a lot of authority on them, other than appointing. And that also flows through Southern Tier West as well, so they're kind of like sister advisory boards.
Aye.
Thank you. So, if I understand this correctly, absent of any of the New York State county law or any other state laws dictating that the county attorney is their attorney, the normal course of their business, they could have their outside counsel do that.
Oh, absolutely, and many of these are separate like that, yes.
Right. Okay. So our attorney would not have to be involved in their everyday business?
Correct. Our attorney is not the IDA attorney. Our attorney's not the DEC attorney for the Fish and Wildlife Management Board. But we do appoint people to those, so they are subject to the provisions that would apply to them.
And the public officer's law requirement for residency, that is based on what? What establishes your residency?
Oh, well, residency can be a subjective test, so you, I'm sorry. You would go through and you would look at where the person states is their residence, what their mailing address is, where they're registered to vote, how long they've resided there, what their intent is, and it's a subjective test, but normally, it's pretty simple. It can get complicated for some people, though. Public officer's law, though, all these appointments, I do believe, would have to apply to public officers, except for anything that might have more strict requirements. These people all take an oath of office. I don't know if you guys know that, but your advisory board members all take an oath of office, and Brenda tracks them all down. She gets all their disclosures. She does a great job of that, and this, I think, would help her organize her files and let people know that are accepting these appointments, that they do have some responsibility back to this office and making sure Brenda is able to get the correct info back for her reporting requirements.
So just for being registered to vote is not a proof of residency?
I think, again, it's kind of a subjective test. It can be a lot more in there.
What your filing, what address you use for your income tax, what you use for your DMV, all those things would be relevant information?
It would be relevant information. Normally, you would not change your DMV address on your license to someplace, other than when you reside, because I do believe there's other motor vehicle regulations that would tell you not to do that, but.
Right. Same with tax, federal and state regulations pertaining to your income tax, is that correct?
But for these purposes, most people should be able to tell us where they reside.
Thank you.
Brett?
Looking at the application, and I'm curious, because we're talking IDA appointments.
Yep.
And if we send this out to solicit for people that are interested, I guess my question would be, what happens if we get an overabundance of people interested? Is there a possibility of bringing anybody in to talk to them, like we, like an interview process?
Absolutely. So the policy does kind of address that all these applications are treated like employment applications are confidential. They go to Brenda's office. They would be discussed in your committee of jurisdiction in executive session, and you would have a process probably for each committee to kind of weed through. If you got a lot, I'm sure you might set up some criteria to kind of, to weed through them a little quicker. If you get down to just a few, maybe you might want to bring them in and talk to them. And once you've selected them, it's no longer going to be an executive session. It'll be a public appointment, and it'll go through your resolution process.
Right. And you have, you have a way of advertising this for us, for different ones of these boards? I mean, I don't know if you want to do it for every board. Some of these boards are appointments, are just legislative appointments that you, that we would deal with, correct?
Well, that's up to you guys. Most counties that adopt something similar, and it's not just one or two, you know, I could probably find 10 or 12 that do it this way, just have this on their website. They have the policy and the form on their website, and anybody that's interested in anything would just fill it out, the way they would fill out other applications. Now, we know that if you have a board, if you're on an advisory board, that you have people you think might be interested, I would assume those people that are reaching out to, to like, you know, the EMS advisory board, saying, hey, I want to serve on that, that board would then direct them to this form, and they'd fill it out. But I don't think a lot of counties do, like, public advertisements. I think they just make sure people give us the correct info that allows you to make a knowledgeable and good appointment.
Thank you.
We can be honest with ourselves here. There are a lot of these boards that nobody in their right mind would want to sit on. So, so we can't get too far ahead of ourselves and think they're going to be pounding down the door, looking forward to filling out this application. But in some cases, there are boards that are desirable, more so than others.
You might have members of the public that think you can't be on a board unless you're asked, and this would be an avenue for them to express their interest, too.
The only thought I had with the application itself is, I don't know if there, you think there would be any benefit to asking the question if they sit on any other boards?
We could certainly add that. I mean, this was just a draft for your discussion. I'm not asking you to adopt it today. This is really more for you to consider and give some feedback. I do know that you'll be making appointments in January. We have plenty of time to add or delete whatever you think's good.
I guess you could see the potential for conflict, perhaps, or, you know. I don't know if we want to delay too long or, you know, deliberate too much on this. What do we need to do to get this adopted so we can utilize it for the IDA appointments?
We just need to have an MOE and pass it by resolution, and then, I mean, you can use the form without adopting the policy, if you wanted to get the form out there, once you're happy with it, but it would be nice to formally adopt the policy.
Someone want to make the motion? Yeah.
Under vacancies, say you've got someone that goes to Florida for three months, and it's on an advisory board, so they have permission from the chairman, whoever, to be absent, so they've missed three absences. Who, how do you know that they have permission? I mean, is that something that has to be submitted in writing to someone, or is it just within the board that keeps track of it?
I think it's just in the board that keeps track of it, and it would be the board that would report up here, saying, we have a member that we haven't excused that's been gone four or five meetings, and this is a vacancy we're asking you to declare. But it's up to each board to keep track of their attendance.
Were you going to make a motion? Or do you have a, go ahead. Yep.
Before we finalize this, on the railroad authority, make sure it has the correct name. It's the Southern Tier Railroad Authority.
I will do that.
Thank you.
I'll actually probably ask Brenda to go through all these, and I don't know if I've said her name enough, but the clerk of the board's office really does a great job with all of your appointments, and they know this stuff best, so I'll have that office go right through this. Brenda, answer.
Thank you. Seconded by legislator Hanchett. Further discussion? Deb? Could you hear Mike? Mike, thanks.
The list here, I think it would be interesting to know which of these agencies this board created and which of the agencies we didn't create but we appoint to. Could they be separated out?
We can actually, we can do that, and I thought about adding a little bit, I just, to be honest with you, I did this last night, this part of it, not the whole thing, the list of agencies, and I can add that to it.
Further discussion? This is a good opportunity, I think. If this passes, when it gets submitted to all the existing advisory boards, to maybe remind them of some of that guidance on open meetings law and public officer's law, because that's a big frustration for me, when you want to either pull up minutes or you want to pull up some bylaws and just take a look, and they're not posted.
Or when you might want to attend a meeting, and you have no idea when the meetings are.
But I find it interesting, and I didn't know this, I guess, that if you create, if this board created that advisory, they can now be a part of the county's website. Because I think a lot of these don't have their own websites. They don't have anyone maintaining their websites, so they're out there struggling, like most boards. And so that was interesting to me, that if you created them, they could have a link or something on their, on your website.
If they're related to county government at all, I don't believe there's any harm in giving them a dedicated webpage, as long as there's a good, strong correlation to us. So there'd be nothing stopping you from having a fire advisory webpage. Now, we probably won't not want it to be massive and overtake our website, that we'd have to add on all our packages to it, but a simple webpage that lets people know about them, we could do.
Well, a simple webpage that would put their, list their meeting dates and their past minutes, I mean, that's all they would really probably need, and a simple statement of what they exist for.
I think, you know, we strive for, we're always looking for ways to go transparency in government and letting the public know what's going on here. You know, we always know we can do better, but we're always working on that, and that's something we can work on through help for our advisory boards, too.
Okay. Last comment from me. Just want, you know, everybody that currently serves on our advisory boards to know how much we appreciate the work they do. It's time out of their, you know, busy schedules anyway, and I would hate for this to appear as though we're coming down on our boards at all, because we really appreciate, you know, all the work they do, and it's hard to find people to volunteer, and so those that do, we recognize their value.
Yeah, they're doing a great job, and I'm hoping this will help clarify for them a couple of things, too. They might just not know, I mean, they're all subject to these things already anyways, but if we can help them in any way, I think we should.
All right. Let's call the question. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, ma'am.
I have one last question before you run off. Advisory boards and Zoom meetings. I've heard this conversation the last couple of meetings. I know Steve knows what I'm talking about. It seems to be a struggle for some of these, especially in EMS, because they have working different hours to be able to attend a meeting, so the quorum struggle is there. So the question has been, is if somebody Zooms, can they be considered part of the quorum?
That is something, you know, if they're looking to do that, it's a possibility. It's something they'd want to work with their county attorney's office on, because they would have to, I believe, the same thing you guys would have to do. Although you have to pass a local law, I think they would have to pass a resolution in their body and adopt an attendance policy and then set up the guidelines for that. And I think, you know, if they're teleconferencing in like that, wherever they're teleconferencing in from has to be part of the public notice. There's official ways to do that. Still, probably not the best option, but sometimes that might be the only option.
Right. And that was kind of what we suggested for them to get with Allison and see if it's capable. I know some places it is, some places it isn't. I know the IDA board apparently doesn't.
They do, and it's the same section of law that I think anyone else would have to comply with, so it's possible. But you do have to get an attendance policy and pass an official resolution to do it first.
Right. Thank you.
It's only supposed to be in extraordinary circumstances, too. If you're ill, you know, you physically can't travel. I don't think it's meant for, you know, you're taking a vacation someplace or you just don't want to come in. So I think that's part of the attendance policy.
How about a work schedule?
Work schedule might be allowable, too, especially if it's one you can't get out of, but you can take a break to attend a meeting.
Right. I mean, there's people Zooming, but they may be working 911 or, you know, things like that, so.
Well, and I think the EMS one, especially if you're a medical professional, you know, you might be tied up other places and can take a break, but you can't drive all the way in for the meeting, so.
Right. Thank you.
I think you're the next agenda item, too, actually.
Okay. What's next? I didn't bring my agenda up.
Local law for the salary increases for the three.
Yes. So we have three people, or three titles that are still subject to a local law. Everybody else is falling under our salary plan for raises and increases. So you do have three titles that you still need to pass a local law for. I've drafted the MOE for the increases. One is the Superintendent of Public Works, and the other is our election commissioners, which there are two for that title. And the third one is our Director of Public Health. So these would, the increases in here are on par with the guidance in our salary plan, so.
And it's your ask that we get a motion to set a date for the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Someone like to make that motion? Thank you, Deb. Seconded by legislator Fanton. Discussion on these? This is the last time, right?
I believe it's the last time for DPW and health. Your election commissioners might always have to be local law. That's the one that we're still trying to figure out. You could do that by resolution next time.
Further discussion? Ms. Caro.
What would be the date of the, of the public hearing?
We would seek your recommendation on the date, yes.
I think clerk of the board has a date picked out, and we can insert that in there. We can look it up later, but I, you know, it has to be done by November.
I think it would probably, if the resolution doesn't go through till November 12, then it would be November 25.
I think we might want the resolution next week to go November 12, though, for the, for, to pass the local law.
Okay.
So that you have your 45 days. You have to have a permissive referendum period of 45 days.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. We do want it to go.
I'm sorry, Brenda. I should have brought my calendar up here.
Yes. No, that's right. So the public hearing would be November 12. Okay.
Good. Okay. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? And that's carried. Maybe you're doing this one, too, or the tax cap override?
Tax cap override. So the board has expressed interest in what a tax cap override would do. Many counties regularly pass that every January. We never have considered that option, so we put forward a tax cap local law. Ms. Caro drafted one. It's the same local law you would see many other counties, municipalities pass. By doing this, you will have the opportunity to explore overriding the tax cap. It does not mean you have to, but as you're in the middle of your budget process, you might find that you need to. Or, in the case that you don't, you just simply repeal the local law at the end of the year. So it's an option many, many other places put on the table right at the beginning of every year. So at your direction, we prepared this, and it's on there.
Okay. So we've all got it. Same deal. We need to request a resolution setting a date for a public hearing?
Correct.
Same date?
I think that would work.
Okay. Is there a motion? Brave soul, Mr. Stocken. Seconded by legislator Havy. Discussion? Mr. Healy.
So I've gotten a lot of inquiries and chin music, I guess is what we used to say about, from the public, about this whole matter, and there's a lot of skepticism out there that we're going to be raising taxes, and I thought that it was a positive thing that you got out in front of it with your public statement and press release, but there still seems to be a lot of people that aren't satisfied with that. But as I've explained it to most of them, especially when I first came on the board, the state cut all our revenues because they were having financial problems, and the county was really in a hard spot then, too, and they'd just come out of a hard financial spot four years before that, when they were borrowing money to make payday. And I give that board a lot of credit for doing the tough things and letting Terry, our county treasurer, do her thing and bring our finances right back in order at that time. And I assure them that this is not our intent, but not knowing what the state's going to do and the true financial picture of the state, which I don't think is probably very good, that they'll be reducing some of our revenue, and of course, they'll blame it on the federal government, but it's not, I don't, Slav is just the state of New York, as we all should be accustomed to by now. So I think it's, this is, you know, a necessary evil, and I guess I'll have to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Sir?
I would just say, I'm totally in favor of it. I think we ought to pass this every year at the regular time, and it's always there. People will stop talking about it eventually, in my personal experience at the down level, and it's just there if you need it. But you don't, you go on living, so I think it's a harmless thing to do.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. While we've got you and while we're on the subject, since Mr. Stocken brought it up, we could direct administration to prepare this annually.
Correct.
For January, right?
Correct.
Is that something the board would be interested in doing? Okay. So, it sounds like that's the way we want to go for it.
I'll tell Ms. Caro just to take the current one and change the date and have that ready for you in January.
All right. We're good there. I'm going to request a motion to take the agenda out of order and slide Item 7 to the